Thank you to everybody who's here in person and everybody who's watching either live via Zoom or later on on Channel 5. We appreciate your interest and your engagement. We begin with approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda items.
One second.
Thank you. That was Mrs. Jarno seconding.
Thank you.
Mr. Almanza? Any comments or questions about the consent agenda this evening? The consent agenda is items of routine nature. There's actually nothing on it tonight except for the personnel list.
Okay, Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Cottarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Dr. Long, aye.
Mrs. Stecker?
Michelle Stecker, aye.
Lucilla T. Varcunis?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public participation this evening?
No. No, Madam President.
All right, well, we always appreciate public participation and we thank the public, though, for their comments and their patience during this time as we're reviewing some of the procedures we got getting classes up and running. We definitely have some moving parts and some balls in the air. All right. Superintendent Quillman, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. If we could get the report of the superintendent up on the screen, I'll get started. We are very excited to have schools open. As of yesterday, we got schools open across the district. But yeah, it's not an easy task and, you know, the majority of students in the state of Colorado are attending school remotely. So to have schools open and to have them coming in even on a modified schedule is a big deal. So I have to give credit to our teachers, to our parents, students, you know, everybody in our community who participated to get our key performance indicators down into the yellow zone and now into the green zone. So we're moving towards a healthier community and getting our schools open, I think, is a big piece of that. So I got to spend yesterday visiting schools. I made it to nine schools in one day. So all the schools at the East End, I got to go in and visit, walked around, saw every classroom. It was inspiring. I've never seen kids, and well, kids especially, so excited to be in school. And I got to see relief on the face of teachers. I think that, you know, we've been hearing about all the concerns for weeks and weeks and weeks and a lot of anxiety and uncertainty. But when students walk back into the building and they see and they meet their teachers, it just all becomes, you know, back to normal. And I saw a lot of relief in the faces of students and staff working together and getting us back to the place that we all enjoy. I think that another thing that impressed me in the school business was the creative solutions that I saw. So at schools all across the East End, I saw outdoor teaching spaces, tents set up all across different fields. Saw new picnic tables outside, so they have outside dining so they could spread out. We saw lunch areas inside the building in places that have never been lunch areas before. And rooms arranged in very creative ways to create more space. So lots of new solutions to our problems and trying to prevent the spread of disease and keep our schools open. So kudos to everybody. I also have to say, I think I counted on one hand after visiting nine schools, the number of kids that I saw struggling with wearing a mask. And most of them were the little tiny ones. So little kindergartners trying to figure out, do I have to wear this thing? But, I mean, literally one hand, I, three or four kids maybe through all those schools who were having a hard time. So that's inspiring to me to know that everybody can come together and understand that we're going to have to do this for a while. But if it means keeping our schools open, then it's a sacrifice that we're willing to make. I'll be hitting West End schools Thursday and Friday and should be able to check off all of them before the end of the week. So excited to keep doing those visits. Next slide. Oh, here's some pictures. This is Eagle Valley Elementary School. You can see a staff member there on the sidewalk as kids are coming in, doing temperature checks. And then let's get to that next slide. These are elementary school and middle school kids learning what distance means. So they're used to kind of crowded together and getting in tight lines. And, you know, at school after school, I saw kids learning what it means to be spread apart and learning to operate with a little more distance. So that worked well. All right, next slide. I was invited to speak at the Eagle County Mayors and Managers Meeting. I attend these on a pretty regular basis. And it includes all the mayors of the different municipalities and the town managers and other governmental leaders. And basically what they wanted to know is what can we expect for schools in the coming weeks? So I shared with them our plan, talked about what the four-day week looked like for elementary and middle, what the hybrid plan looked like for high school, and that we're excited to see the KPI in the green, but we still need to be vigilant in keeping this disease under control so that we can keep kids in school. Next item on the list there is working with ECEA. That's the Eagle County Education Association, also known as our teachers' union. They've expressed some concerns to me in recent weeks and we're definitely keeping the door open and being responsive to their concerns. I think some of their bigger ones were about the start date for health insurance and we got that moved up for new employees so that they could be covered sooner. They were concerned about some of the cleaning products that were being used, so we've given them some choices around those products. They also wanted us to create a COVID sick bank separate from the regular sick bank that we provide. So we developed a program where staff could opt in to a COVID sick bank, which gives them just an additional layer of support in the event they need to take extended absences. There was also concern about face masks. Are we going to be serious about enforcing face masks? Or are we going to create loopholes for people to dodge it because we really believe in them and we think that it's going to create safer environments for kids? So we assured them that we'd be strictly enforcing the face mask policy in schools. And they also had some concerns about if we had adequate PPE available, protective equipment, in schools. So we got all those pieces delivered, a variety of different kinds of masks and buffs and cleaning supplies and desk shields and hand sanitizers and you name it. We got all kinds of different supplies delivered and in teachers' hands and in classrooms. So I have to say we have an excellent relationship with ECEA. We have open communication. We try to be responsive to their concerns and just build a relationship of trust. And I think the result of that is, we opened schools yesterday. So we got to keep that relationship strong. We got to support our teachers and the result will be, we'll have our schools up and running. Next slide, please. Since our last meeting, we did hold Educator Academy. That's our welcome-back day with a lot of professional development opportunities for our staff. I have to give a lot of credit to Ann Heckman and Mary Ann Stavney for the programming that they put together on that day. It was very flexible. It honored the need to spread people out, so they were able to attend in their buildings. They were able to tune in to all the activities remotely. There were instructional programs available that were synchronous, so taught with an instructor virtually online in that real time. And then there were some that were recorded that they could then pause and do at their own time. I want to give credit to Tia Luck, too, who developed a good tool for analyzing equitable practices in schools and they got to work on those as well. And many of the programs that our teachers engaged in that day were developed by our ed tech team, which includes Brian Brueger, Bree Chittenden, and Will Harris. They've worked tirelessly all summer and deserve a lot of credit for all the options and flexibility that they've created. Grizzly Creek Fire and others. So it wasn't just one fire here in Eagle County. We had three or four other ones that we were managing. So the school district was involved in that emergency planning. We actually opened Battle Mountain High School as an evacuation center. So we worked with County EOC and the Red Cross on that. We also provided updates to our West End schools in Eagle and Gypsum throughout last week so that they could make some accommodations, especially in the afternoons, to shift some of their activities because of the prevalence of smoke. So from a pandemic to wildfires, we just had one more thing to manage. But our principals and teachers really came together last week and powered through that. And kudos to the emergency operations team that have gotten that under control. Air quality down here is much better in the last couple of days. And I know that the containment is increasing, so thank you for all their efforts. And our facilities will still be available if there's a need for them in the future. So I want them to know that we'll continue to work with them as needed. And finally, radio and newspaper interviews. So throughout this week, as school was about to get started, I had a lot of requests from different radio stations and newspapers to sit with them and explain what we're looking forward to and what our challenges are. So hopefully you've seen those in the Veil Daily or heard them on KZyr, KZ, KSKI, La Nueva Mix. So we had lots of information out about what this start of the school year would look like. So it has been a busy two weeks, very productive, but I'm very happy to say that we've got our schools open and we're ready for business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Superintendent Quillman.
Thank you, sir. All right, then that takes us to the board reports. Dr. Long, shall we start with you over there?
Sure.
Sure, let's have a couple of things. You know, I'm at Colorado Mountain College and the last few weeks since we've met, we made arrangements to have the automotive program going. So they're going full-time. Jim Jones is the director and the instructor over there. So, you know, right down the block here is where the automotive program is. And they have a lot of students there, about 75 are going to be going in shifts. They modified the schedule with help from Greg Doan so that they don't have to miss any hands-on in the automotive industry experience that they need. Also, we had a new faculty orientation at the college. Two faculty who are directly related to Eagle County. A new math faculty at Eagle Valley and a new biology, a dual enrollment faculty at Eagle Valley as well. We had our dual enrollment meeting, so that's where we meet with all the high school students or teachers who are teaching college-level classes at the high school. There were about 28 teachers at that meeting. So we had teachers from Eagle Valley, Battle Mountain, Veil Ski and Snowboard Academy, and Red Canyon. And that's where we go over the rules. And our rules are very similar to the school district rules, you know? Social distancing, you must wear a mask, and yes, we do police it. If you're in a college class and you don't want to wear a mask, we will ask you to leave the class. So we're on the same boat as you guys are. So another thing that's kind of exciting that's come up recently is the esports initiative. The college got a $90,000 grant from the Perkins Federal Program to start in esports teams at Battle Mountain, Red Canyon, and Colorado Mountain College. So they're going to be using the career technical educators at those schools to build their own computer builds, their high-powered computers. And then we're going to start recruiting people from the industry, or students from local areas to audition for the teams. They have to try out and then we'll hope to build a team. And esports has changed a lot since, you know, since we were younger. But it's all about collaboration. It's about communication. It's about working together. And it's about strategy and planning to try to get your team through the maps and work together to achieve your goals together. So besides opening up CMC, we opened up as well this week and we have some students in the building, but not many. Only those classes that were deemed essential for face-to-face instruction. For example, EMTs, paramedics, CPR training, biology labs, chemistry labs, where the students could not get that hands-on interaction through like a hybrid model. Those were the classes that we have this week. And then we're planning on staying in that model for the rest of the semester, kind of no matter what. It wouldn't be, it's not, our teachers are doing well in the hybrid environment and the students are not complaining about not coming in face-to-face. So it's likely that we won't change our mode for the rest of the semester. So besides that and the esports teams, that's all I have. Thank you.
With summer wrapping up since we've been together last, I just wanted to take a moment and express my sincere appreciation to all of the providers that worked so hard this summer to offer programs for children. It enabled local families to continue working and provided so much relief. You know, this year's brought a lot of unexpected and unprecedented challenges and opportunities. And for these groups to provide safe and enriching camps and summer programs to help out families has been great for our family and for the community. Special shout-outs to those that provided arts and recreation opportunities, to Power Hours, who's a great partner with the school district, and then to the rec districts, including Avon Mountain Rec and Veil Rec. Really appreciate the hard work they put in to offer those opportunities. More related to my role with the school board, I have gotten to join the weekly fifth-day task force calls, so helping to plan for programming for kids and families for Wednesdays. And with that, it's been just great to see so many prevention providers and program providers, again, continue to look at safe manners, that they can offer support and places for kids to be during that time. We also had a meeting of the School District Wellness Committee, a group that hasn't met since about the second week in March when we got a report from Rebecca Larson on this thing called coronavirus that might be coming here. So that was great to reconvene with that group. And with that, we heard from the prevention providers. We heard a little bit about the Safe and Resilient Schools course and plans for the school district to continue that learning through the school year. And then I also got to deliver a presentation on our Healthy Kids Colorado survey results. And I've done a couple of those in the past week or two. It's been great just to talk about youth behaviors and trends and needs and supports and all the great opportunities our kids have that we need to continue boosting in order to provide a good environment for them. So that's a little bit of what I've been up to.
I'm so excited that we are back in school. My daughter started school on Monday and I think so far it's been relatively successful. I'm very excited to have Eagle County schools back in session. And other than that, my son is actually leaving Sunday for a gap year, nine months abroad. So I've been doing a lot of trying to spend time with him and organizing for his trip. I am excited to go visit. I'm home at State Peak tomorrow morning. I'm going to be going to help with carpool, to greet families and kids in the morning and then sort of walk through the building and see what types of accommodations they've made. And I'm going to Red Sandstone on Friday morning to do the same. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the schools are looking like. But other than that, I've been doing a lot of family time. Just got back from a backpacking trip with my son. So anyway, that's about all I have to report.
Mr. Almanza?
Thank you. I'm back to making lists again because I'll forget to say stuff. But first and foremost, just to thank again all the agencies that help out with the fire and all responders. So Mr. Quillman, thank you very much for offering support and offering Battle Mountain High School and everyone else as well, just helping out. As far as things that I've been doing, I'm very excited that the school is back on. And with that, I'm going back to being a little more busy just because we're back to offering programs within the school. So first and foremost, thanks to Carol Johnson and Emily Voight from Speak Up Reach Out. I was able to get my QPR, the Question Pursuade Refer Certificate. So now I am also an instructor for QPR. And I already am a mental health first aid instructor for English and Spanish. So I'll be focusing a lot this next month on teaching QPR and mental health first aid to our communities. And I'll focus primarily in the Spanish-speaking community first, but I'm planning to keep that going for quite a bit. Then the next part is Red Ribbon Project. I spoke to Dennis Kip and we are planning on September already starting our maturation classes again. So some of you kids who are young adults will see me again and we'll talk about maturation. So on other notes, Mountain Youth and Jess Christensen, we have GDL presentations to work on as well. So young adults 15 and a half and older will start learning about their permits and what they need and stuff like that. I know we missed this past time because of COVID, but we'll try to catch up. And then with Sandy Schroeder, also from Mountain Youth and Communities That Care, we are moving on to the enforcement strategy team. There's the time to implement. So we'll be moving forward to more on that. And last and but not least, I'd say, I was able to practice some of my American Sign Language signs or skills yesterday. And I was impressed that I still remember quite a few of them. But, you know, going back to just focusing on the deaf and hard-of-hearing community also brings me back to all the points that I need to brought up. So other than that, I think that's about it, but I'm excited and happy for everyone going back to school. So, thank you.
Okay. So all I have to report is that I spent all my summer with the kids. And it's been great, but I'm so excited and thankful to the district for having them back in the schools. It was a great start yesterday. They were very excited. Everybody was doing a great job, you know, greeting them, taking their temperature, getting them to their classrooms. And it was a great first day, so very thankful for that. And thankful for having a little more time to myself. So hopefully next time I'll have a better report. Thank you.
I also attended the Battle Mountain Town Hall last Thursday. There were only about four people there, I would say, in person. But, so at first it seemed discouraging, but then it turned out there were about 75 people online, so that was good attendance, and I guess people are in the Zoom mode. And I participated in a TEDx that was focused on education. Kat Haber invited me. And the one thing that I just wanted to say that sort of stuck out to me was there were lots of different kinds of educators on there, two that were formerly in Eagle County schools. And they talked a lot about the arts and how, given what's going on with COVID, it's easy to get focused on sort of the core subjects and how do we keep kids up to speed with sort of the more traditional, or with reading and writing and math, and that the arts should also be, that we need to pay attention to that and make sure that for those kids that that is sort of a big draw at school, and also just from a creative standpoint that we are sure to include the arts in any way that we can. So, that, the only other thing is on September 1st, so I think it's next Tuesday. There is, yeah, next Tuesday at 6:30 PM is the CASB Region 8 meeting, so any of you that are interested in attending, it is virtual, but I think you do need to sign up in advance.
Yeah, I'm looking at the email, and there's a register button, so I think you need to sign up, and then they'll give you probably the link once you register.
And I'll be there, as your trusty rep.
Thank you so much for that additional CASB work. I think, especially for newer members, it's really great to take advantage of these learning opportunities if you can. This is, I haven't been to a regional meeting, it's nice that it's virtual this time instead of having to drive so far because of regions, but...
It sounds like also the, I'm blanking on what they call it, but it's where they look at resolutions is also going to be online, so...
The Fall Legislative Conference.
Fall Legislative Conference, exactly. So, that's another opportunity that people would have to attend if they're interested, more easily than usual, where we usually would have to...
And all these are part of our CASB dues and memberships, so these are included. Yeah, right? Is it the virtual ones?
If they're remote.
If they're remote, right. If we're going to a conference, obviously there's more cost, but this is a way for us to save money and access some of that great...
We're region A, is that correct?
Yeah. And they actually allow you to attend, if you could go to a different region meeting, just happen to be the timing and you want to drive to a different area, you can, I'm not sure about this, online format, but it's the participation that's, what's important and the stuff that CASB, and NASB has some things, I'm not quite sure what those all are, but it's always great to know there's learning opportunities out there for us. Were you finished then, Julie?
I am.
All right, so, I'm very excited too that we're back in school, and it's great. My second year of not having a kid in K-12 education, so it's quite a shift for me. So I don't see as many folks as you all, I want to appreciate all the connections you fellow board members are making and taking the comments from the families and patience, or thanks to the families for their patience and understanding and us trying to get all of the new systems in place. Luckily for me, because I kind of lay low at my home office and just try to do my part as a community member to keep my distance from everybody, I don't see that many folks, but the people that I do see have been thanking me and thereby thanking all of you, especially I'm looking over here at District Leadership Team and everybody who's in the schools and everybody who's had a part in making this happen, thanking me for the good work that we're doing and the efforts of school to get the kids back in the classrooms. Kids are thrilled, parents are thrilled about it. And my husband said people were thanking him and saying, "What a great job, how everyone had a good day yesterday." I was like, "That's, that's good," when the news gets around that way. I've also had people calling me and asking me how they can help and how they can get into schools and, like grandparents, sort of, or great aunts, and they want to know, they say, "We know the schools must be really struggling, and these kids need extra help. What can we do?" And I just told them to contact their principal of the school that they want to help and then be patient and give them a week or two to get on their feet, but then they probably would be able to take those extra help, extra reading buddies or whatever it is that we need. So hopefully we'll be able to accommodate some of these community members that just really want to help these, help kids. I get to participate in agenda planning on a bi-weekly basis. What is this? I finally bought my own car. Melissa had to leave, but she was the one who inspired me. She's like, "You had the same problem four years ago," and I said to myself, "That's a bad step if you find yourself right back where you were four years ago." So I'm upset now. Used, but a used car. And just getting out in the high country with the, I get to go backpacking too with my son, and it was really nice. And we ran into a hunter, a local guy, you know, and with three teenage boys, and I just, I love seeing that tradition of the father teaching the kids what to do and where to go and where their secret camping spot is and getting them out. And those boys had to been up at 4:00 AM because they walked through where we were camping just as it was getting light, and it took us two hours to get there, so that's good, strong Colorado ethics there, being passed down, father to son. And I will 90%, 85% miss the next meeting, and our illustrious vice president will be running the show, and I'll, if my trip gets canceled to California because California's burning up more than Colorado, I won't stay home and play hooky, I'll come in and join you all, but as it stands right now, we'll see how that goes. And that's about it, I think. That takes us to old and new business. These agenda for tonight and for next meeting are fairly light because the team at, the leadership team is pretty busy with other stuff. The two meetings, we're going to be starting our school improvement plan, so then the meetings, agendas will start to get a bit longer because it takes some time to have the good, deep discussions with the principals about what they have going on in their schools and how we can help them meet their goals. But that doesn't start for a month. We'll do our board self-evaluation as, as we try to do every other meeting, talk about the facility, master plan update, some more COVID planning, where we're going with that. Well, that, and then some monitoring reports and whatever else happens to jump up on our radar. Does anybody else have anything they want to bring to our attention? You know how to get ahold of me if you have any issues, Dr. Long?
Yeah, I forgot to mention that I did go to the new faculty orientation and also the, kind of, the welcome back at Battle Mountain High School last week, and I was, it seemed, it was very well organized, very well run, and I was, I was telling earlier in the executive session that I was thrilled when Rob Parish got up and made a point of talking about the grading practices that were going to be instituted and how in spring there were different, probably more lax grading practices, but they were not going to be following those for the fall. They were going to be, you know, they were expecting same type of outcomes as if they were face-to-face, and they were going to, they had very specific ways that they were going to try to make that accountable, the teachers accountable, the students accountable. And then also the highlight of the meeting, in my opinion, was how he removed the 30% grading basement that they, that they had at Battle Mountain for some time, and he said that teachers are now allowed to give zeros there, and that was, that was a thrill for me, because I don't want my boys to get off something, get 30% for not turning anything in, so most of the teachers were very appreciative of that, and I wanted to give a shout out to Rob Parish that I was glad they instituted that at Battle Mountain High School. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Anybody else have something else popped up here? And we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the COVID-19 planning update, and we could use this opportunity to address the green. When it dropped to green on Monday, it threw a lot of us off. Those metrics are created by public health, and they, doesn't mean that it's all clear. It means that we're ready to move forward and...
Yeah, I can speak to that.
He's going to speak to that first, and then we'll run through the other points here.
So our detailed back-to-school plan was shared with the community over the past two weeks. On our website, it could be found, titled "Work Together to Learn Together." It's about a 40-page booklet with lots of details in it. It's been distributed electronically, also posted on the website, as I said. And then principals have created customized plans that include the details specific to their own schools, because we can't micromanage for them how to do drop-off or how to do lunches because all the facilities are very different. The booklet did show that when the KPI, the Key Performance Index for the county, moved to green, that we would be full in-person, and frankly, we expected that to take months, not days. So the fact that it moved to green so rapidly, but we are still in a time when the five, the five commitments to containment are still in effect, it put us in a bit of a conundrum. So we realized that if we were to move into full in-person right now, that that would put 25 kids in a classroom or 1,000 people into each of our big high schools, and that our ability to keep containment really goes out the window. So we will be remaining in the mode that we're in right now for several weeks in hopes that we can maintain in-school learning as long as possible. We're afraid that it really is incongruent to open schools to the full normal model as long as we're still trying to require distancing. And all of the changes that we've made in programming this year are to increase distancing and cut down on the spread of COVID-19. So we think we need to stay in this mode for several weeks, and we understand that the booklet that we put out states that we would be full in-person if it was in-green, but rethinking that in light of continuing the five commitments to containment, so that's the situation that we're in.
Right, and certainly until the state and the county lift their mask ordinances, we, our, our hands are tied as far as that, and the five commitments to containment, we want to stick with those as long as public health deems that is necessary.
Yes.
With the entire goal of keeping kids in school as much as possible, because once we get back into yellow or red, that will be a huge step backwards, and we would rather move forward slowly than backslide.
Yeah, keeping them in school as long as we can, for as normal as we can, is our goal. And if we just went back to business as usual right now, it would really elevate risk and likely shut everything down much quicker, so we don't think that that's a smart move. So in addition to that, we just want to thank the board for giving staff last week to continue planning. They held a lot of organizational meetings, they held registration meetings with parents and students to really prepare them for what to expect for this year, so they appreciated that, that extra time. Parents should also know that the bus schedules are published on the district website through the SmartTag system, so they can see routes and times, and we're trying to maintain cohorts as much as possible, and on Tuesday on our first run, that went, that went pretty well. We'll see if we can continue to manage that as smoothly on Thursday and Friday when we add high school kids to the mix. We continue to work with the Eagle County Education Association and their leadership team to address some concerns coming from, from teachers. Some of those included the start date for health insurance for new employees, adequate PPE for staff and students, clarity regarding the key performance indicators, as I just explained to you, they had those concerns and others. So we try to keep that door open and maintain a collaborative relationship with ECEA, so that's an important part of our plan, because we've got to have teachers confident in, in the health and safety of our schools in order to keep them open. We're also working with public health, we have almost daily contact with our representatives in, in public health to, to run scenarios by them and get their advice on different policy or protocol changes that we're recommending, so that's a good relationship that we have with them. We have delivered a ton of PPE to schools, including lots of, thousands of face masks have been delivered, hand sanitizers in every room and stationed throughout all the buildings. That was one of the things I noticed yesterday. Kids are definitely understanding the routines of going out to recess, hand sanitizer, coming in from recess, hand sanitizer, going to lunch, hand sanitize, coming back from lunch, I mean, all day. So they're, I see them washing their hands, going one at a time, wearing their masks, so it's, it's good. I think they all understand that this is a group effort to keep schools open. I got to give some kudos to our staff, principals, teachers, they've shown incredible creativity and flexibility in the last couple of weeks trying to plan for all the intricacies of the system changes that have occurred this year. There's also some, some stress, because there's a lot of unknowns and uncontrollable elements that we have to work through this year, but we'll continue to be responsive to the needs of staff and students and parents as we start this year. One other question that has come up a lot this week is details about after-school and fifth-day planning. Assistant Superintendent Melissa Riewald-Thun is organizing those efforts and provided us a report earlier today, but she had another commitment, so I'll share details of that for members of the community who are watching online. I'll start with after-school programming. We are working with a lot of community partners to develop different after-school opportunities. Public health recommends that we limit those in the first couple of weeks of school till we see how we do just getting all these bodies back into the building and can we continue to keep disease spread under control. If everything looks good, we remain in a, in a good place, we can start to add some of these other elements on. Another piece that we're trying to be mindful of is we've worked really hard to build small cohorts of kids that we can control their interaction with other cohorts, so that in the event somebody gets sick or needs to quarantine, we're quarantining the smallest group possible, so when we're thinking about after-school programming, we're also trying to be really mindful of keeping those cohorts together and not mixing them. But again, going back to, to public health's advice, if we see stability in disease spread through the next few weeks, we can consider starting to mix some of those and offering up even more opportunities for families in, in after-school programming. I can say that right now, we have after-school programming available through the Avon Rec. District and through Vail Rec. District, and those are at Avon and Red Sandstone Elementary Schools, and those are operating now. We have some other programs that are going to be starting soon. Mountain Rec. will be offering some after-school opportunities starting September 9th, and then on the 28th, we'll have power hours opportunities available through Youth Power 365. So what you'll notice here is that progressively, week after week, we're able to add more and more and more, and that really depends on stability of disease control, the ability to start mixing cohorts. And another big element to this is, is our, our community partners ramping up their capacity to manage this, because they've only had a few weeks to, to consider this type of scheduling based on the changes that the district has made, so they're, they're ramping up and we'll see opportunities grow throughout the, throughout the month. So let's transition to fifth-day programming. We have a ton of partners in the community that are ready to start offering activities for students on Wednesdays. It's important to note that Wednesday is, is not an off day, so let me lead with that. We still need kids to academically check in on a Wednesday, and we'll send out some further clarification later this week on, on what that looks like at each school, but there's a, there's a list that's 100 items long of things that kids can do to be academically checked in on a Wednesday. And again, we'll clarify those details, but our, our community partners are aware of those, and they're going to help with our students and make sure that the time that they spend in these activities also counts towards their academic engagement with our schools. So I'll start with Walking Mountains. They are on the verge of offering some virtual science lessons free of charge on, on Wednesdays, and they'll also have some live in-person programming at one or two schools that have facilities like greenhouses that facilitate that kind of additional work. Vail Performing Arts Academy, Celebrate the Beat, the Library District, Cycle Effect, Vail Rec. District, even Buddy Werner, and Alpine Arts, Eagle Climbing Gym, these are all some of the organizations that are going to start offering Wednesday activities for students. Again, those will start to ramp up as the year progresses, as we see steady disease trends, and another challenge that those organizations are facing is that most of their employees also work for the school district. So we're trying to overcome that challenge with them and recognize who on Wednesdays is, is able to free themselves from school responsibilities, from, from lesson planning, for example, from any kind of meetings that are like professional development meetings, to work with those organizations to provide some additional staffing. So we're surveying our staff to see who's available to do that, and then getting them the proper training and certification to go in to do those jobs. So in terms of informing parents about these opportunities, next week we will have available on our district website a link to after-school and fifth-day programs, and that'll include a lot of details, where it's available, for what age groups, if there's any cost, and some of these will be free, some of them will have nominal costs involved, but all those details will be on that webpage. I would ask parents to, to understand that that page will develop over time, so it may open with, with just two or three options on there, but every week we'll add several more. So it will, our capacity to do that will, will ramp up as we understand better who wants to do what and where, and what staff are available to conduct those activities, and we work through logistics of, of space and transportation. So we're working on it, we know it's, we know there's a high demand for it, and it's a lot of collaboration between a lot of different entities, but we're making progress. Are there any questions from board members about any of these planning elements or things related to the start of school that any members of the district leadership team could address for you at this time? Thank you, guys.
No more questions from the, from the board? We, we had a lot of questions earlier, and they were all answered, and then clarified now. Right? This is the big item of the evening. Approval of the Resolution of 2021-5 for the November ballot language. Superintendent Qualman?
Thank you. Attached to your board documents, you'll find a resolution. This is a formal, formal resolution that contains the language that we would put on the November 2020 ballot. 3A mill levy override was passed in 2016, but it was passed with a sunset to expire in 2023. We think it's important that we get this renewed as soon as possible. We are looking at very turbulent financial conditions for this school district, likely for the next three years. State revenue, tax collection, property taxes, state budget are going to suffer dramatically because of the recession that has engulfed this nation. 3A represents a sizable chunk of dollars that our community has committed to our organization that we can count on to provide some stability in our budgeting process. So we're asking that we renew this early so that we can count on these dollars moving forward into the next decade, so that we can try to keep our schools as, as stable and as vibrant as they have been with community support. So the language that you'll see attached clearly outlines exactly how these dollars will be spent, and so that the community hears exactly how we're intending to spend these, it follows with how the original 3A was proposed in 2016. To attract and retain quality teachers and staff. This is a difficult place to live on a teacher's salary, and we need to do everything we can to get good teachers here and keep them here. Maintain mental health counseling. This board in recent years has made this a priority. We've hired additional counselors, we've partnered with the Hope Center, and we've greatly improved our student-to-counselor ratio, and we want to make sure that we maintain that moving forward. Maintain programs like art, music, technology, and physical education. We heard earlier in board reports how important the arts are to developing the whole child. We have valued these in our community, and when the recession hit in 2008, some of these positions were the ones that got cut because we didn't have the finances to keep them. We don't want to be in that position again, we want to maintain these, these important elective opportunities. Provide updated learning materials and reliable technology. These are the things that, that teachers and students use every day in the classroom. Reliable technology is, is more important now than it has ever been. We've managed to get reliable Wi-Fi devices in every student's hand, and hotspots for those who don't have consistent internet connection at home. But these devices have a shelf life, typically four to five years is about as long as we can get out of them, so we need to keep rotating effective devices into kids' hands, and the technology changes. So what was cutting-edge five years ago, you know, how quickly do you change your iPhone? You know, those cell phones get updated pretty regularly, imagine what the technology changes with computers. We also want to continue to provide quality education in the classroom and online, so we're, we're committing to the professional development that it takes to transition our lessons to the virtual world, and we think many of the skills that we've learned there will translate after this COVID pandemic has passed. The language also clearly states how money won't be used, and I think our community has made it very clear that these dollars are not to be used for raises for executive team leaders. Sorry, guys, that's us. This money is designed for, for teachers and students, and we'll, we'll make sure that that's where it goes. To that extent, there's an accountability measure in the language. The accountability measure states that we would hire a third-party auditor to examine exactly how these dollars are used, make sure that they follow the requirements that we have in this language, and that audit report would be available to anyone in the public who wants to check up and see how those dollars are being spent. So this is an action item, asking for your approval that we put this language on the ballot for November, which would then become incumbent on, on you to help in this campaign process, get the word out, tell our community that financial stability and predictability is extremely important for us in the next decade. We are still, still today recovering from the recession of 2008. Our budget has not recovered to the place that we were pre-recession, and now we're in a second recession. So imagine how long it's going to take to recover from that. So this is the stability that we need, that's why we're asking now.
I have a question. We talked in the past about not having a sunset, and I don't see anything in the language. Would there be a sunset to this one, or...
There will, there will not be one.
Okay, and that doesn't have to be on the ballot?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve the ballot language to renew the 3A mill levy override as outlined in Resolution Number 2020-21-5.
I'll second.
Excellent. Is there further comments or discussion? We have talked about this for quite some time, since, since 2016, we knew that this renewal would come up, and we've talked for a couple of years if this was going to be the right year to do it, and it will be a big relief to know that we do have stability for the next, the next decade, and into the future with no sunset, but if it does not manage to pass, we still have a few more years to get that message across to our community. I think they're going to understand what we have going on and why we're, why we're doing this, and I would imagine we're going to have quite a few voters coming out in November, hopefully. There's a lot of issues on, on that ballot. So any, so are there further comments or discussion? Nope, we've talked this one around for months. Missy?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. Steve Arkounis?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, board members, I appreciate that. You should also be aware that EFAC Education Foundation for Eagle County Schools is prepped and ready to take over campaign management. They've already let us know that they are, are ready to go and excited to get the work started, so this should start soon.
Right, we're grateful for EFAC, to EFAC for the work that they do for us. And so, the next item is the approval of McMahon and Company to perform our 3A procedures, auditing, and monitoring. And we got the microphone. Sandy Muchler will walk us through this.
All right. Good evening, and just speaking of 3A, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the approval of McMahon and Company to do the, perform, agreed-upstream procedures for 3A. And we've had this done before, last year, based on the recommendation of the 3A Committee. And so the last time we met in December and had discussions about this, it came back to see if we could go ahead and do an RFP to get board approval for continuing to do this through the term of this current mill levy, which would go through June of 2023. So we did go through the, the formal RFP process for that, and we received three bids on them. So we did go through the formal RFP process for that, and we received three bids on them, and the amounts are identified below. And so the recommendation that we're bringing for you tonight is to work with McMahon on the engagement letter for a total of $4,850. And that's the annual amount that we would pay through 2023. And so they are our current auditors. They're the ones that did it last time, so they have a very good understanding of how 3A works. And as part of the reason, they could probably offer it a better price than the other organizations. So this is an action item, and we'd be requesting that you make the approval of engaging them to complete these procedures.
I'll move to approve McMahon &amp; Company to annually perform agreed-upon procedures for 3A through June of 2023.
I'll second.
Just have a clarifying question. So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, this would be to engage with them to audit and provide services for us should 3A pass? And so if we move forward and agree to engage with them and 3A does not pass, what do we just?
We would continue to engage them through 2023 based on...
Oh, got it. Because we currently have it through 2023.
Yeah. And so then I believe in the, if it is approved, that we would continue to do this annual audit just to give that extra certainty that we're spending the funds appropriately. It's been very difficult to keep the 3A Committee intact because there's not a lot to discuss on it. And so this just gives that reassurance through the entirety of that.
And then if we are successful in passing 3A without a sunset, what happens in 2023? Would it come back to the Board of Ed. to determine if we wanted to continue with those services in that partnership?
Yeah, I think the intent would be to have that audited annually anyway, if, without the sunset. If it's renewed, that we would continue to do that.
Right. And then we would just do this RFP process and grant somebody a contract for two to five years?
Correct.
And then keep rolling it through. Because we for sure have the money through 2023. So we definitely need someone to do this work through then. If it does pass, we can...
Right. And I would assume that we would just write that into the original engagement that we have with our current auditor and as we change auditor so that we always have the same one also doing that. So the original audit that we do, the independent audit that we do every year, talks about materially misstating and making sure that we're not doing that on our financials and that we're spending the money and classifying it appropriately. The agreed-upon procedures goes more into meeting the intent of the ballot language, which is above and beyond our normal independent audit that we would have done. And that's why we would want to make sure that that was just added in to any future engagement we have with our independent auditors if it passes.
So by hiring these auditors, are we dissolving the 3A Committee? Or is that still going to happen?
Through 2023, the 3A Committee is part of the ballot language, and so we would continue to work with them. But even the most recent one, I think we've lost two more members, so we'll be back to the board again, looking for another recruitment to add, to keep the committee alive through 2023 also.
Okay. Thank you. Right. And the difficulty in keeping the committee going is why there's no committee language in the new, in the ballot language emphasizing we'll have an auditor. I mean, there'll still be a lot of eyes on this money, but we actually need to have a system that is like reasonable to enforce or, you know, to find people who are going to come to it. And it's, I think at the beginning, the community was very concerned about the extra money and would we be able to track it and prove the way we've been spending it, but we have been able to do that. And so now they're not as worried about it. And with the auditor, keeping an eye and your report.
And it provides a highly qualified independent company that can do that. And not so much, some of the 3A members of the community were, on the committee, were concerned about really their level of expertise to judge and calculate whether we were spending appropriately or not. So that's why we ended up engaging the independent auditors for it.
Any other clarifying questions? Excellent. Missy?
Second. Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
All right. And here we have the student fees, which is some revisions in red. And earlier, was it... Sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Keep an eye on me, Fernando. Keep an eye on me. The next item is approval of student fees, the changes to the student fees. Is that what we're calling it?
That's correct.
The revised student fee schedule.
And so as Kate mentioned, the revisions are in red. One is the middle school tech fee for $15 per student. There's been no change to that. It was inadvertently left off of the final one that was presented and board-approved as part of the budget. And so we want to make sure that we get that changed. And that really wasn't caught until the middle school started charging, and it wasn't on the list. So we wanted to get that back on. And then on the page two, under the user charges, this one really just more clearly identifies the rates that we charge for preschool for the half-day, full-day, the extended day and summer, as well as the infant-toddler schedule so that we have the amounts on there. And so we've been working off of that schedule, but it just was never really put as a user fee on here as clearly as it was. So we've also added the stipulations that go along with that, and that's what the parents see when they're enrolling their children in those programs. So we wanted to make sure that you guys had an opportunity to see that and that it's clearly published and communicated throughout the whole process. So we'd be requesting that you approve it as revised.
One question that caught my eye for either you or Amy's in the room as well is, it looks like on the early childhood chart, there is an additional cost for students that are on IEPs. Could you tell a little bit more about that? And is that the case?
That is. I don't know if you have the details to that or not, but this is really done through Shelley Smith as part of the preschool program and because of the IEP process that we're able to charge that. But we can get more clarifying information for you if you'd like.
I'd be curious to learn a little bit more. I mean, I understand why there would be additional resources needed to serve those students. It also doesn't seem very equitable. I wonder if there's other funding sources available to help offset those costs. Yeah. A little more information on that would be helpful.
Okay.
So I'll just speak to, there should not and can't be a charge for the portion of IEP services. So I need to get clarification on what that looks like. What I believe it's for the families that are choosing to stay full days or beyond, the state-sponsored preschool program for kids with disabilities. But I'll clarify that with Shelley.
So for example, and I guess this is hypothetical or a hunch right now, if the services are covered for a family with children on IEPs for a half-day program, but they choose to extend to a full day, so that cost is not necessarily to support their IEP, but just to support that extra time, that might be what this chart's reflecting?
Okay. And that would be the, most likely, the difference between the line above, the full day of the 40, and a reduced cost for the students with the IEP.
That would make sense. Maybe it looks like we're charging them extra, but they're actually getting charged less. There's a nod over there. So it's, yeah, the chart is misleading, but the reality is better.
Correct.
All right. We feel comfortable with approving this revised chart without the exact clarification from Shelley Smith? Yeah? I heard a yes and not? Then we had a...
Maybe we should approve it, but then if a revision needs to be made, then we approve the revised because there's other things besides that? Is that what we want to do?
Yeah, I think so. I think if it needs to be revised, we'll revise it again.
Is that comfortable? Okay.
I move to approve the revised 2020-21 fee schedule.
I'll second.
Further comments or questions? Missy?
Thank you. Mr. Almanza?
Aye.
Mrs. Alter?
Aye.
Mrs. Caccarella?
Aye.
Mrs. Jarno?
Aye.
Dr. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Decker?
Aye.
Mrs. T. Varounis?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
We're pretty much, we're pretty much done here. We have the feedback and evaluation of the meeting. We didn't hit on too many governance policies here this evening, but we did, we always have our actions tied to our governance policies. Did it advance the goals and mission of the district? I think by meeting here this evening on the day of the second day of school, getting schools open, I think we certainly did. Getting those kids back in building is what it's all about. And did this meeting impact student learning? I sure hope so. But we didn't do that much tonight, except as I move forward, and hopefully we'll get that 3A extension in November. That'll be a huge weight off of all of our shoulders. Anything else? Any other closing comments? Thank you all so much for being here and all the work that's been done by the staff and the teachers and the families and to get these kids back in school and the whole community and to get our disease spread under control so that we can keep these kids in buildings. That's what we need to do. So stay safe and hang in there. We're, we got this. We got this. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.